And is to find the summer of 2024, all grade levels will have an increase of 50% in the meets and exceeds on state assessments in P L A and math. And 80% of students will be at the national percentile of 50% on the district-wide adaptive measures, fast bridge, based on math and reading. And then 80% of the students will be in average range on the district-wide curriculum-based measurements, which is also through fast bridge and early literacy and the O R F score. So with that, it goes down into these additional aspects of the learning stand. What do we need? What steps and strategies do we need to perform to accomplish this? And so again, I'm not going to go through all of these, but that's how we structured our goal within this method. And then this is the biggest level of system or structure. So that's the district improvement plan. So moving here, we go to action plans, and these have all those six areas addressed as well, just as the district improvement plan does. But right here, we're just going to go over one of the goals that addresses the same color, even though color scheme as well on the district improvement plan. And then on here, we have the action steps. As you can see, I'm highlighting on the left there, correlate priority standards to grade level data. Here you've got standard-based report cards. Goal two, utilize data to support learning gaps. And this goes on and on. There are several goals. This is just only one. There are also other six other goals. And what we did is took these six goals, and I will show you an activity that shortly after I show this school improvement plan, we use that information to develop concise action steps. So this is an example of a school improvement plan that also filters in in the same district group structure, measurable goals for the enhancement of the school, and it's also supporting the district improvement plan. So it's structured again, the blue ones really focus on student data, the green ones, which I'm not showing yet, but you have in your packets, focus on climate. Red goal is focused on reinforcement and function. And those have permeated at the district level, the action plan, and at the school level. And everyone is aligned, pushing together. Here's goal two, the homeschool as well. And again, that's the green, which is the climate and culture. And the teams have all worked on this, and the individuals that work on this at the building level is a diverse team as well. So what you're going to see over and over through the presentations that I'll send to you tonight as well, on the M T S S process and the instructional support system, you will see that there's by design stakeholders at the table. So every school building has a building leadership team that is a diverse team of individuals of different grade levels, special needs, school site, a diverse group, probably an instructional coach, so that we have different perspectives when making decisions and different stakeholders with different knowledge sets that could help accomplish success. And just briefly, the fourth goal in red is the one that works on reinforcement instruction as well. And so these, you know, they're very deep. There's a lot of actionable steps. But this is what's driving the district now, and it's what we have in place. I want to just show you the structure of how we put it together. We took the action plan and we had an activity in our district leadership team, the long-range planning of when do you do what, what's first? That's a lot of stuff I just showed you, and it was for us, and it was causing me a ton of anxiety saying, okay, guys, we got to organize this, and what's first, what's second, what meeting venues? How do we get this pushed out? And how do we get it so that it's not a district plan sitting on the shelf? And how do we continue to use it? So we put in place structures to help us view that. And this was an activity we've done several meetings ago. Let me log in. And this is how we started organizing all this data, all this information to start making progress on. And it took a meeting of interactive, you know, decision-making and placing things where they belong and where they should go. But we came across again, you know, with this great opportunity to learn technology. It looks like it's taking a little while to go up here. But we used a very neat tool that's an extension of Google to organize this. And then, so as you can see at the top here, we have our district leadership team, building leadership team. Special old communities with the coaches right here, P L department meetings, and the specialized department meetings. So those are all a lot of different venues for us to accomplish learning and structures to move forward. And here we have on the months on the side, what will take place in January, meeting venue, who's responsible, February, we've got our cabinet column here, D L T, so on, and it goes to the right as you can see. And so we've structured these using the action plans to say, what professional learning do we need to know to accomplish the goals and everything that we're trying to do? So the learning is not done. We just put in place, basically, we have our skeleton in place that is beginning to be used more. And then it goes on down, you know, arch all the way through June. And so as we work on these aspects, we're, I'm making my agendas based on this information. Derek is making his agendas with the instructional coaches based on this information, and we're organized. So again, organizing this district has been a lot of work, but it's going to pay off. And the training and the structures we're putting in place is going to help us have a district that is learning at a maximum level. That's what that was the district improvement plan goal. This is the instructional support system goal. And the status of this is complete in use and evolving and enhancing currently. This initiative is led by Derek Nagle and the instructional coaches. It collaboratively worked with the union, Illinois M T S S administration, and other stakeholders to develop what we're doing. Now, keep in mind, there is a strong belief amongst some leaders that we need the smartest person in the world at the top, and they just delegate and say what to do. That doesn't work. And that's not my style. My style is to say, hey, we have some places we need to go, how are we going to get there too? And that's how we're functioning as a district. That's how the community leadership teams are functioning so that there is collective decision-making. And when you have that, you have the best ideas because you have diverse stakeholders at the table, and you also get buy-in because they're helping provide input in how we're going to get where we're going. So West 40 has also been a very important stakeholder in this in helping us develop the high-level training and the plan to ensure we have a sound system of embedded and ongoing professional development so that we're not wasting people's time, where we're differentiating from teachers' needs and helping them with actual things that are going to help increase data points on our district improvement. But we're getting aligned. Further, we're using current preparation time that is embedded in the teacher's schedule to focus on enhancing practices for student achievement. Focus is on instructional practices to enhance the student learning. And there's a structured set of professional learning for our district. And this has been developed so that we're a little more organized district-wide. And so in those collaborations and teaming and professional learning structures, we have to get organized. What can go in this? We can't just do anything here. So we created these different structures when we make this larger. And at the top here, we have the professional learning communities. Their focus is on instructional practices to help teachers work on their craft. We have grade level team meetings, and that is meant to work on conditions. So if there's a student who is not progressing, we analyze that in a grade level team and look at interventions we can put in place. This stuff doesn't just happen once, oh, there's a big issue, this kid's having a bit of trouble. This happens embedded, systemic, it's regular. So we're trying to close the gap, the cracks kids can fall through, to ultimately close that achievement gap and then get kids all learning at a high rate. It's going to take a little time, but we have to build the machine to be able to do it first, and that's what we do. Then we have collaboration sessions focused on teacher learning. And Derek developed a sample of how this works and how this functions here, and it's extremely organized, and it has a little bit of wiggle room in there. And then I observed Jan Bernard's B L T this last week, I believe it was, and they helped determine as a building leadership team what their next meeting would be about. So again, you get the professionals, you get all these stakeholders leading and pushing together in a unit. And I can't emphasize that enough, that that is beginning to catch some steam and people are learning this culture of, hey, you get some say in this, and hopefully, what I'm hoping is that makes them proud of the work they do and it gives them some gratification because when they give input, you see their product making good progress. So everything of those projects ultimately goes back to the district improvement plan and supports it. So that's how this all becomes very sickly. The third goal is the M T S S handbook. This is, we have a complete initial draft as we're reviewing it, where we're trying to look at it and say, what's missing, what needs to be tweaked, or we need to bring it back to a larger committee for some further analysis. But we do have a big chunk of this, which M T S S, as we define it, we get to the next slide, encompasses all that stuff we just learned, everything. Everything comes all under this umbrella. Instruction and intervention model, the infrastructure of capacity, ongoing professional learning needs, that goes to our instructional support system. So when we talk about how do we do business, this is how. We got the leadership, we do have teaming concepts, database problem solving, data evaluation. And so M T S S covers everything. There are some schools and some trainings that define it a little more focused on R T I and the tiered system, which can be defined as this, but we define it more broadly. And the R T I and tiered system is part of this, but it's not the only part as it has been defined of algorithms and trainings that M T S S synonymous with R T I. That's not how mine defines it. And we developed that in the committee. I don't know if you remember, a year ago, like celebrating about 50 or 60 staff, those were those committee members helping develop. And then so it's moving, it's progressing. You know, artists in the hair, I'm more like a clothes, I'm going to just keep going. We're going to keep moving. So Embrace M T S S is a process to track and monitor student interventions. We're going to begin rolling that out. There have been historically different ways of doing that. It's usually dependent on who the school psychologist was, and they brought their own separate way. So what I wanted to do is uniform that for the district and say, hey, anyone who comes in, this is what we use so that it's familiar. Otherwise, if you have a staff member that leaves, they just took their process. But we found ourselves spinning our wheels, recreating or relearning different processes. Embrace M T S S will be that thing to track whether interventions for particular students are working or not. So if a child's struggling in math, they're in fifth grade, but they're having a poor grade level, we show that in these six weeks, we intervened, here's what we did, and it worked and it improved. So it doesn't always work, though. But at least we're not going to go a full year and then say, it didn't work for the full year. We're going to say, hey, here's our next benchmark four or five weeks later. This isn't working, guys. We have to adjust. We have to adjust the instruction, we have to adjust the interventions and database problem solver for the individual student. So student support teams for individuals can be consisted of problem solvers, which include the administrator, school psychologist, social worker, teacher, parent liaison, parent and student, or whoever else is needed in the process. And, you know, with the M T S S and the instructional support system, I asked Derek Nagle and Kim West to create the presentations that dive deep because these things, those two things there are extremely deep, and you'll see it. They did great presentations that take you a little bit deeper, but you'll hear some of the same language that I'm talking about, just becoming routine. People are starting to gel together with the training that Illinois M T S S has been providing us, and we've been staying steady and consistent. The problem-solving process is something that we utilize. You know, we don't just say, oh, I think it's working. We need data to tell us. What's the pre and post-test telling us? Is this child improving? How did they do on their N W B A? And then we bring this data, and then we analyze, where are they struggling still? Try to enhance notes. So it's getting very granular and very focused, but we still are teaching the system and the process. So while it's built, we have training to do, and that's where that map now comes in place. So it's built, we have to choose that, and we're going to use those meeting venues to do. And then practicing with our data, it can be abundant, great, emotional, but we will continue to work with it. Why isn't happening? It can do, and it can work. Communication, but it's just work in progress, and then I have a big opportunity to. Or two, be patient, play a bit. I was proud of their old today, the programming unit, and our just regular structures are getting funding stronger because of my team members, that voice is being heard and things are not festering. Because that's one of the worst things, if you don't have regular, consistent checkups, things can fester, and then the culture, the avenue in place. Better make sure that if there is something, not the avenue to, the venue, let us know if you can act on it, you know, right away. So that takes place in my cabinets, D L T and B L T structure. Because it does communication back and forth between those structures. Those are the stakeholders and the number of. We've got our Facebook up in the morning, flowers, and other pertinent information that we're. Liaisons, email phone, provide class, go join. Emails are going to be getting a draft. With that, go to month, district level, administrators, these are regularly as well. But that's from the. Sprint presentation, and I'll be all wrapped it right now for the community, just to say, where are we now? How is this vaccination going to impact us? Just give updates through those. Regular meetings with community. Advancing the communication as a district. Parent liaisons are becoming very key players in communication and reaching out to parents. If you look at the Facebook site, Ruby Ortiz put a nice program together, lift leads, what she did is phenomenal. Not only did they develop that flyer to announce who they are, put their faces out there, let the community know their role, they also developed, Ruby helped them learn how to develop it because that's going to be part of their, their skill set is to be able to communicate out to the public, you know, create flyers, they get people involved. So not only did they create it, but they learned how to do it at the same time. Community output will be carried out by the parent liaisons, and then student and staff community surveys have been going back and forth between buildings. You know, who's going to be coming in? Do you want hybrid? Do you want remote? With the vaccination, there's going to be more information going out back and forth between parents, teachers, aides, and then staff members to try to determine, you know, next steps for each thing. But it's, we're building the plane as we're flying it, as they say. Technological infrastructure has been enhanced immensely, and, you know, partially thanks to the stimulus money, which helped us with some resources. But the Q and S staff has been working very hard. They are very involved with the district leadership team meetings and cabinet meetings and the communication process there and feeling of where we're going and where we've been is at a very, very high level with them. I appreciate them. Or exactly, it could be, it could be, whether they have management individuals helping us and thinking with us and problem solving at our meetings, or they have individuals step in regularly. So they're constantly there. Oh, what are some of the things they've done that are the starting proposal? We added three new Dell Power Edge servers. We designed network infrastructure, eliminating unnecessary servers and bottlenecks, new 40-day fiberwood firewall, which was donated by them, Dell Opti Flex desktop PCs, replacing old machines, 224 of them, 40 new Dell Latitude 3500 laptops, increased storage capacity, processing speeds, future scalability and reliability, the heat rate for 2020, 2021 is working toward fiber interconnectivity, better performance, and it's future needs. The change from copper to the fiber is a big switch, and we were having, and we were still not perfect, but we were having much more connectivity issues in the past, prior to A T and T, just finishing up maybe a month or two ago, the project for the fiber. So it's all getting better, but we're still working for enhancements. Switching upgrades and better performance on speed for future needs. A T and T bandwidth upgrade was part of what I was just talking about, increase from 200, I don't know what all the little letters stand for, megabytes maybe, to two gigabytes. For a second, okay, thank you, Vito. Without increased bandwidth, remote learning would have been crippled, and we felt it at times, trust me. Continuing new domain to eliminate security concerns, move from the M S exchange to the Google suite or email, upgraded the network backbones for speed and reliability, 300 new Chromebooks to facilitate remote learning, but actually, it's more now, I believe, I just got in some more as well. Chromebook life cycle rotation is still needed. Go Guardian is a tool that they've helped us put in place so that teachers have more control of what the students are doing at home and can limit them from going to different sites and being off task ultimately. Cloud-based backup initiated and ongoing antivirus program and then system updates with a lot of fancy words down there that mean something to the technology individuals, but it's a little bit above my head in terms of understanding. And then finally, the last slide on our technology upgrades is the COVID-19 global, global supply disruption on Chromebooks and other technology equipment expected to be back to normal by March 2021 for cynics. And then the ticket system is something that speaks for itself. Again, as they promised when they came aboard, you can put in a ticket, and it's going to be resolved. It may not be resolved by the tech here. It may be, but it may be resolved by somebody else who may be in Alaska. You know, they have people all over, so we really have a lot more staff helping us than we realize or see on a daily basis. So tickets are a very efficient way to get work done efficiently and to track it, and then it's useful for them to help them create their own goals and to enhance what they do. And then just miscellaneous, numerous cables, adapter switches to enhance speed and reliability, webcams, and we're listening to the teachers and staff as they have remote issues, and, you know, we're learning that some of the things that we're doing could have been enhanced by either better cameras or, you know, dual screens, and we're trying to make it a better learning situation for everybody. And then finally, navigating COVID-19, that's my sixth goal. And, you know, we discussed that quite a bit, and we see it in action quite a bit. You see my letters coming out regularly when we're reporting out COVID cases and whatnot. So let's see, going in order, keep myself on track, I should. We created a learning plan in collaboration with the stakeholders. So we have a learning plan in place that we're implementing, that we have a return to learn plan that we're looking at under the hybrid model and continue to work on with the unions and the different stakeholders as to how that will look. The symptom tracing process, you all have seen the letters go out quite a bit. Number three there is implementing all safety standards set forth by the C E C and I D P H, as well as mandated by Illinois State Board of Education. Number four, there is bargaining several sets of working conditions to ensure the safety of all in the appropriate environment for students and staff. We became a one-to-one district rather quickly thanks to the stimulus funding. And then we have enhanced the cleaning practices and the protective equipment for the district. Other highlights aside from the COVID is, you know, going back a little bit to my beginning has created a P L director position, which has been a huge impact for the English language learner students and the teachers, and they're getting a lot more support and they've been with they do regularly. We brought in a registered nurse for each school. The timing couldn't have been better with COVID. They have been a huge part of the symptom tracing and that whole process and communicating with the health departments. The parent liaison physicians, again, can't say enough about the work that they're doing. And Ruby has created a professional learning long-range plan for them, and so they're going to get better continuously as they do their jobs as well as implement their jobs and support the parents and work toward an increasing parental involvement. The instructional coaches for each building, powerful, extremely powerful, the work that Derek and that they are doing with West 40 and Ruth O'Gaines is extremely commendable. You're going to be so impressed with the PowerPoint or the Screencastified recording presentation that Derek Nagle has provided to you, and I will get to you this evening. We've also eliminated a huge majority of the $1.5 million deficit. The last tangible number was it was a deficit of about $47,000. We're going to look at that and see how it has been flow of needs because there's been some cost-saving measures, but there have also been some cost-increase measures that we've incurred very heavily. And then the, you know, definitely for safety purposes, but I really appreciate the creation of the school resource officer position at the last meeting, and we're continuing to work toward enhancing that and getting the hidden governmental agreement finalized to bring to the board. Thank you very much, and I'll open it up for questions.
I just had one. Did you look into the school resource officer? Like I emailed you because that is going to the House for votes and.
Yeah, it did not pass. I talked to. I talked to the attorneys and Wes Horry, and they said that it was stricken down. It did not exist.
Really? The website, they haven't voted on it yet.
I'll send you the resources that they sent me.
Okay, good. It just said that it just went first for the meeting.
Okay, maybe another part of it evolved or something, but.
That'd be great, because I would love to know what, how that hands up, because it doesn't make sense to do what they want to do.
Sure, absolutely.
Happy, thank you.
Any other questions? Either parent members remotely, or anybody here in the room?
No, but you put a lot of work into it, thank you.
All right, moving on, go ahead.
Hi, so just to, a couple things, sorry. I will go ahead and put this live presentation on for the public, so they can see that. And just to reiterate, the meeting started at 7:02. Olivia, all of our board members were here, Olivia, Vito, Shannon, Marj, Sharon, and George. Winifred was, came in at 7:16, so I just wanted to let everyone know that.
Okay, moving on with public comment.
Okay, so for anyone joining the meeting via telephone, you will automatically appear in our list of meeting attendees. During public comment, the meeting moderator will call out the last two digits of your phone number in the order they appear in the meeting. At that time, if you wish, when the last two digits of your number is called, you will be able to make a public comment. Please press star six to unmute yourself. If you don't say anything when your number is called, we will wait three seconds before continuing on to the next number. Anyone wishing to make a public comment will have three minutes to speak. After the three-minute mark, you will be alerted that your time is up, and you will then be returned to a muted state. Anyone joining this meeting must remain muted outside of their designated speaking time. And for anyone using Google Meet, please check the chat box for the moderator's instructions on making public comment, and I do have one written public comment, so I'll start with that. Joanne Schaefer, after realizing that once again, the Board of Education has chosen to keep your monthly meeting closed to the public, we are left with writing letters. You know that is impossible. You know that it is impossible to hear the meetings on the phone, much less being able to commit to comment and tell them. Have any of you noticed the bills for this month are over $2.5 million, and no kids in school? Have you noticed that $40,000 is going for tents again this month, and no kids in school? Also, have you noticed under the Village of Lyons, $3,000 for water for two months, including $300 for each of the three Lyons schools? $900 for operations and maintenance, Y, O, and M, and what for? And no kids in school. Also, please notice the Village of Stickney is $250 for two schools, two months, and Brookfield is $55 for one school, one month. I have a hard time justifying so much money being spent when the education of our children is in banding mode FS. Our teachers are doing the best they can under these circumstances, but we need to get back in school, whether hybrid or totally in person. Get the stream back on track, please, our kids need a full education now. And that is all I have.
All right, I will speak off the area code and the final two digits of the phone number. I will give you a few seconds to unmute yourself before I move on to the next. We will start with 708, ending in 03.
Hi, this is Joanne Schaefer, and I know I wrote a letter, but I want to let you know. Chris, it's nice you gave that big, long, lengthy presentation, it's great. Problem is, you can't, on the phone, we cannot understand what you're saying. Yes, we can grab words here and there, but we cannot understand your presentation. So you spoke, and the public knows nothing about it. Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Bye. Okay.
The next number is 708, ending in 21. The next number will be 708, ending in 25. The next number will be 708, ending in 30.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Tom Weiner, proud parent of a third grader, and I guess got a couple of questions pertaining with COVID and in-school learning. I know this year, I don't see any of the return to in-school learning. Hopefully, come August, we can get all the students back into school, of course, after all the teachers and all the staff can get vaccinated over the summer, including myself and other parents, and hopefully, we can, in August, we can get them all back, everybody back in school safely. The other thing, also with the COVID restrictions in Illinois being pulled back, a lot of places are going back to tier one, which includes indoor dining. Now, with the restrictions being eased back and brought back, and if there's indoor dining in restaurants, and even health southern gyms are, could be opening again. We should be able to get the school board to have their meetings back open to the public with, you know, with the certain restrictions to where we can get people inside in the board, to see the board meetings in public, in person, safely. And hopefully, we can do that within the next two months. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, next will be 708, ending in 42. Next will be 708, ending in 54. Next will be 708, ending in 69. And lastly, we have 708, ending in 73.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, this is Gloria Medina.
Hi, Gloria.
Hi, okay, I'm not sure if you can hear me, because it is very difficult to hear you guys, you just, we hear mumbles, and the presentation that Chris just said, you have a lot of lingo that a parent will not understand. You're being too professional now, and it's nice that you're presenting, but I can't see it, and the lingo is hard, okay, you're overdoing it, you need to know that parents don't know what you're referring to when you're, you know, having your little special technical lingo, with all due respect, okay, we don't understand. And another thing is, I really want to say is that they are, you know, my friends that want remote, and they are friends that want to do the in-person. Now, we have to take in consideration, we are the ones that have the children, okay, not you, and so it needs to be done safely, and if it's not the time to open it, perhaps you can offer some special, like a special counseling session for those who really want to do the in-person, because it's not fair also for the parents that want the kids that are doing remote. To continue remote, it does work, we need to make sure that safety is above in the priority. Okay, don't just bring the teachers in just because you feel like it's safe, okay? We don't even have a second doses for the vaccine. We need to be real, we need to be positive, but you know, we got to be real, okay? This pandemic is not going to go, and if there's kids that really need help, find a way to deliver that instruction, okay? But don't make us, the remote people, go in there and have our children killed, okay? It's on your hands. And all the board meeting, all the board members, you guys know that, especially you, George Torres, okay, blood is on your hands. You need to make sure there's a constructive way to do this, and it's not going to happen, because we don't even have vaccines for enough people. So we need to be real, thank you.
Thank you.
There were no additional phone numbers, and no one has indicated in the chat from Google that they wish to comment.
Okay, moving on, year to date, financial, the financials are attached to the agenda for the public. Moving on.
Wait, I have a quick question. Can you just, Jill, I'm lying, or?
Jill, are you on the call? I think I just heard.
If she is, I need to tell them.
I was just wondering, because when you look at the financials, it shows quite a few areas of deficit, and I just was wondering if that was for the month, or if that was year-to-date?
No. Areas show a large deficit?
There's quite a few that show deficits, showed deficits, when you look at this, and I was just wondering if it was just for the month of December, was there, was there things that became up against that we weren't expecting?
Okay, what, can I give that to you tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, I wrote down your question, if she's not on there, then I'll get to her, and I'll get that to us.
Also, can we get a, can she give us an idea? Because we used to always get, like, how much of the property taxes had been collected, though, like, how much of the fall property taxes had actually been collected, like, you know, what have we received? What was, did we get what we were expecting? Did we receive any percent of property tax, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Also, Chris, this is Shannon, I had that same question, so if you can also get me that information, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll get it to the whole board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, moving on with the second agenda. I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, as presented. Do I have a motion? I will make the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Comment? Hold the roll.
Okay, so Vito was first, Olivia seconded, Olivia Quintero, yes, Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez? Shannon Johnson?
Yes.
Marjubasak?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
George Torres?
Yes.
I'm sorry, wait, I'm sorry, what was Winifred's vote? I didn't hear it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the extension of memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education, Lyon District Board of Commissions, and Lyons Council Teachers Union of the West suburban Teachers Union, Local 571, regarding temporary teacher choice in work location during the COVID-19 pandemic, until such time, as metrics allow for a return to in-person learning, as presented in the memorandum. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, okay, Vito, Vito with Shannon, you want a second, or?
Or I'll second it.
Okay.
I have a second with Shannon. Hold the roll.
Okay, so Vito was first, Shannon seconded, Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
Yes.
Marjubasak?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Quintero?
Yes.
George Torres?
Yes. Action item C, I'm looking for a motion to approve the extension of the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education of Lyon District 103 and STEIU Local 73, regarding the program, the program is choice temporary work in location during the COVID-19 pandemic until such time, as metrics allow for a return to in-person learning, as presented in the memorandum. Do I have a motion? I will make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Okay, so Vito first, and Olivia seconded.
Call the roll, please.
Okay, Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
Yes.
Marjubasak?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Quintero?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
George Torres?
Yes. Action item C, I'm looking for a motion to approve the keep all lawfully closed executive sessions, closed from September 2019 through November 24, 2020. Do I have a motion? I will make that motion.
I'll second that. Okay, so Vito first, Olivia seconded.
Call the roll.
Shannon Johnson?
I'm going to pass.
Okay, Marjubasak?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Quintero?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, and George Torres?
Yes, motion passes. I'm looking for a motion, I'm adjourned at 8:02 PM, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? I will second.
Okay, so Olivia first, Vito second, Marjubasak?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Quintero?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
Yes.
George Torres?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye, everyone, thank you.
Bye.
Good night.